I'd like to call the Lincoln County Board of Education meeting to order. It's our meeting on November the 12th, 2024. And at this time, I would like to ask two students from Love Memorial to come up and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Colt, Colt. Come on, I'll come, I'll come to you. This is Colt Goodman, and he's in the fifth grade at Love Memorial. And who is your teacher?
Ms. Jobe.
Ms. Jobe, do you like her as your teacher?
Yes.
Well, that's good. And you are, from what I understand, you're interested in Batman, Legos, reading, realistic and fictional materials?
Yes, yes.
That sounds good, and you play West Lincoln Optimus, JV Ball?
JV, yes.
Sounds good. And Grant, I think you're in the third grade, aren't you?
Yep.
And who's your teacher?
Ms. Leatherman.
I'm gonna ask you, do you like Ms. Leatherman?
Yep.
Yep. Nothing like being put on the spot, is it, to answer a question? He's a hard worker, and he loves to learn. He's interested in Harry Potter, Goosebumps, and one of my favorites, Ghostbusters. Oh, yeah. And you play football for the West Lincoln Optimus, and your team is what?
The Peers.
And what's your winning, losing record?
We haven't ever lost a game.
Well, that's great. Good job. So thank the two of you for coming tonight to lead us in the pledge, so it's yours. At this time, at each of our board meetings, we like to have someone to review our Lincoln County Schools' mission statement because it really gives us, it gives the Lincoln County Schools' families a good focus on what we are to do to educate the students in Lincoln County. So at this time, I'm gonna call on Dr. Allen to read our mission statement.
Thank you, Mr. Jarrett. All of our guests in the gallery, this mission statement is one that, you know, we currently operate under. However, a lot of you know we're in Leader and Me as a district rollout right now, and so part of the challenge with the mission statement is setting goals and visions. And, and, and each week, each month, whatever time period, evaluating is that mission still relevant to us? So, you know, we started this conversation with Leader and Me rollout in examining mission and vision and goals. Our mission statement is also one that we're currently reflecting on and considering how we can bring that up to conversations, up to the idea of, does it need to be changed? Is it relevant? Do we need to continue to, to adapt our mission and our vision? Because it has been our mission statement for quite a while. But part of the mission value is all of us understanding what is our mission. So I would invite all of our guests, all of our board, to read this statement with me as we kick off this meeting, okay? Lincoln County Schools will work together with students, families, and the community to ensure a quality, innovative educational program in a safe environment where students become responsible, contributing citizens, and lifelong learners. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Allen. At this time, we need to approve our agenda, but before doing that, I have four additions to the agenda, and those additions are under Agenda Item 17, Consent Agenda. And the first one is E, the middle school restroom concession facilities to approve the architectural drawings. F is purchase of a four-by-four truck for the IT department. G is purchase of 100 computers for the IT department. And H is purchase of new cameras and installation for the high schools, for the four high schools. So those are four additions to Agenda Item 17. And at this time, are there any other additions or deletions to the agenda? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve as amended. Does that move? Have a motion by Mr. Mullen, is there a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Jenkins, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Opposed likewise, we now have our agenda for our meeting. At this time, we'll hear from Dr. Allen for updates and informational items from the school system.
Thank you, Mr. Jarrett. Community, those folks online and in, in the gallery today, I want to give a shout out to all of our schools that have taken the time and effort to really celebrate our veterans. By my rough estimate, we have had seven schools to participate in some type of celebration formally for our veterans, either on the seventh, the eighth, or even today. So I want to appreciate all the veterans and take an opportunity to celebrate our, our staff that are veterans, our family members that are veterans, but also the work that went behind the scenes with our students and our staff to make, make that day special for our special, um, uh, community members. We also want to take time to celebrate all the work that went on behind the scenes to do what we call Career on Wheels, and we call it the COW, but that's really stands for Career on Wheels. And that is where all of our fourth graders in the district got exposed to careers that involve wheels to do the job. And this is part of our Project 414 Career Investment Plan to where we're exposing kids to, in all sorts of areas of career readiness in elementary, middle, and then in high school. We also were able to have our seventh graders at each of our middle schools participate because it was on the campuses of each of our four middle schools. We just appreciate all the community partners that participated in that. Every zone had, had some different group of people that were there, but some stayed with us all week, and that was very gracious of them to commit time, resources, and personnel to invest in, in our young people's futures. We also want to celebrate one of our employees, Dr. Laurie Dimes. Some of us may know this, some of you may not, but she has been recognized this year as the editor for the North Carolina Middle Level Educators Journal, and that's a pretty big deal because they put a journal out twice a year. She's been the editor for the last couple of years, but I want to make sure that the folks know that we've got people that are impacting the state and their work beyond Lincoln County Schools and beyond their classrooms. So congratulations and thank you to Dr. Dimes for her commitment to that service. I also want to give a shout out to all the parents who, who showed up at our parent-teacher conferences in the first nine weeks. We had 57% of our students were discussed during the month of September. Whether it's proactively or reactively, they were still discussed with all of our staff, and that is our best return rate yet on, on our parent-teacher conference attendance for, for that event. And so I appreciate all the work that went into making that happen throughout the month of September as we try to work through, um, parents' schedules. I also want to celebrate, um, last month, we've taken the time to celebrate some of our behind-the-scenes workers outside of our core teacher group, and so this month I want to recognize our cafeteria workers. Mr. Aker and I and Ms. Ryan have recently started back up what we call the Lunchroom Tour. And so we will go with our crazy hats and our gloves, and we'll give the cafeteria workers a break for that day, if nothing else, just to relieve them from the work that they do to maybe get caught up and get ahead on some things. But it is not lossful, the invaluable service that our cafeteria workers do each day to make sure our kids are fed for breakfast and lunch. We are fortunate to have universal free breakfast here, and a majority of our schools to have universal free lunch for those schools that qualify. So I'd just say from the idea of cafeteria service is one of those that, for my three kids, they all love eating in the cafeteria, and I sure did eat, love eating in the cafeteria. Some of my favorite memories are from the cafeteria lady back in the day growing up when they'd sneak a little bit extra something that they cooked on my plate, and I really appreciate that. But I want to say that from the idea of, those are some of the people that know our kids the best and sometimes get, get, um, a little recognition, so I want to appreciate and love on those folks today. And then last but not least, before we move on to our recognition, you know, the last, two months ago, we had a moment of silence for a student that we lost tragically during our school year. Unfortunately, we've had another student pass away during our school year. And so as I end this section, if we could have another moment of silence for a senior, Lily Gerton. She was a senior at Lincoln High School when she passed away earlier this semester. So if you would join me in a moment of silence for Lily's family. Thank you. All right, so as we wrap up this, we're getting ready to go into our public recognitions category for our evening tonight, but I do want to end this section with public recognition of our two board members that have their last meeting with us tonight, serving in the capacity of a school board member from Lincoln County, Mr. Mark Mullen and Ms. Myra Hevner. Tonight is their last meeting, and a lot of you were here to celebrate that with them, and now we're getting ready to come up here and formally recognize them. So board, if you would, join me around in front of the dais, and we will begin the recognitions. All right, so this is for Myra and Mark. So I'm gonna read a few announcements that are global, then I'm gonna read something specific for each of these folks. You know, working as a school board member is one of the most important and challenging roles, and often sometimes underappreciated public service roles that our community will ever have, opportunity to know about. And tonight, we want to recognize you, your family members, and your fellow board members for the work that they do and the commitment to our students and their staff and our families. These two members specifically, but all of our board members up here collectively are passionate advocates for quality education. They spend countless hours behind the scenes reviewing policies, attending meetings, listening to the concerns of our community, and working with the district leadership to ensure schools have what they need to succeed. And that's sometimes more of a challenge than people realize. They each bring unique strengths, perspectives, and experiences to the table, and it's the dedication and commitment to excellence that drives our district forward to be one of the best school systems in North Carolina. Thank you for never losing sight of your role of an advocate, of a leader, of an opportunity to just strike up a conversation, to tell part of our story whenever you are approached in any capacity. Your commitment doesn't go unnoticed, all of you. Your commitment doesn't go unnoticed, and we're grateful for each of you and the cultivating excellence that you have done during your tenure, okay? Specifically, Ms. Myra Hevner, some words for you. She's represented the West Lincoln Zone faithfully as a parent, from a parent lens, from a small business owner lens, from a community member lens, but also as a staunch supporter of all things West, and that is definitely shown in, in your time here. You, when I think of you, I think of, that you'll be known for your accessibility, for your availability to your, to your folks you represent, but also the fact that you're an advocate for teachers all the time. You're always bringing the teacher voice back to the conversation. You encourage collaboration with all of our elected officials, LITA specifically too, which all the time you were hoping that would result in more opportunities for our students. You challenged others in a spirit of being better, not in malice, and you will always be remembered as a champion for all of our stakeholders in Lincoln County Schools. Thank you, Ms. Hevner. Mark? Mark, you have been my constant during my second stint back here in Lincoln County. We've been here the whole time, or you've been here the whole time I've been back. We've grown up together and figured out how to lead Lincoln County throughout these years. Your brain is very unique, and I'll leave it at that. Your perspectives and insights, although sometimes challenging, have proven invaluable, rich, and, um, opportunity, not only to better us, but also to lead us to do better. You've been a champion of the underdog, and I think you've used that statement often in, in your time here. Whether you were representing the city at one time, North Lincoln Zone at one time, you've always kept the Lincoln County perspective at heart, and that's what makes, will make you a valuable asset on the commission. You'll be remembered as a leader, as a doer, and also as an advocate for Lincoln County Schools. We appreciate both of you. I've got a little plaque of recognition for your time on the board and a card. And again, just thank you for all that you've done for us, for our students, our community, past, present, and future. Thank you very much.
Board members, it's a pleasure to be here this evening for your recognition, but also to discuss our newly implemented Healthcare Academy, which is the first in the state. And I found out last week that there is another school system not too far behind who is starting their own healthcare academy. I think it's in Surrey County, but they're starting in January. So we are the first in the state. That is probably two years in the making with many meetings, a lot of discussions, a lot of conversations, and it can't, those kinds, those types of things can't happen with just a school system. We have to reach out to our partners, and we are so full of gratitude for the partners that we have here this evening that helped with the creation and the implementation of the Lincoln County Schools Healthcare Academy in conjunction with Gaston College. So there are several individuals, many of which are here this evening, some are not, but I'm gonna call out the ones that are here. Dr. Heather Woodson, Heather? Heather is, Dr. Woodson is the Vice President of Academic Affairs at Gaston College. Mrs. Leslie Presley, the Associate Dean, uh, the Associate Dean of Health and Human Services. That department was very instrumental in our Healthcare Academy creation. And Ms. Joanne Matts, she is the Dean of Lincoln County Educational Partnerships. Her office is at the Gas, the Lincoln Campus over here across town. That is where our Healthcare Academy is located. And of course, we are transporting students to the Healthcare Academy from LCST. That's one of the first we've ever had transportation. We wanted no barriers for our students, no barriers for our kids to participate, our students, to participate in this new Healthcare Academy. And one more person, Anna Mullen, representing Rotary, Anna, come on up, please. You know, when, when, when students take college classes, it's, it's kind of costly. And I get back to that, no barriers to student participation. And I remember the conversation, I called Anna in and said, Anna, can we meet? She said, yeah, I'll come by your office, and she came by, I said, Anna, we need to figure out a way to, to get these kids some cash and fund their, um, program. And Anna said, well, okay, I'll do it, and she did. And Anna, how much money did you write a grant for? But we'll take? We'll take 40 grand. So, yeah, that's right. Let me reiterate, and there are several folks from, from Atrium Lincoln that I don't, Dr. or Ms. Reed's not here this evening, I didn't see her, who were instrumental in this process too. That is where our students will be doing their clinicals. In the nursing program, they have to do the clinicals, so they'll be going over there, and they were all in the meetings too. Again, Gaston College is, is a fantastic partner, and Rotary, and Anna in this case, fantastic partner getting this ship to sail, so we appreciate your efforts. Thank you very much.
Okay, I'd like to welcome up East Lincoln Middle School Cross Country Team. East Lincoln Middle School. I think he has one more year of eligibility. So I'm gonna read a little bit about what they, their accomplishments for this year. Going undefeated is no small feat. It's the result of long days, countless hours of practice and push, pushing each other to be the best version of ourselves, not just as runners, but as teammates and friends. These athletes didn't just show up on race day, they showed up every day committing to give their all. They did it through strength-building drills, sprints, or long runs. They believed in themselves, they believed in each other, and they believed in the mission of the team. Thank you to everyone who made the season possible. Congratulations Falcons on an undefeated season and a well-earned conference championship. By the way, it's their second straight year as the Tri-County Conference Champion, so congratulations to the East Lincoln Middle School Cross Country Team. All right, thank you. I'd like to welcome up the East Lincoln Middle School Golf Team. While they're getting their handshakes, this is the third year in a row that East Lincoln Middle School's golf team has gone undefeated and won both the county and conference championships. This year, they were led by two of the best golfers in the conference, Kennedy Gallantine with a scoring average of, of 38, and her best score was a 34 one time, so wow, that's incredible. Sloan McKinney with a scoring average of 39. In fact, Kennedy is the first golfer in the conference to play three years of middle school golf for her team without ever losing a match. So that's a great, uh, great accomplishment. Congratulations to East Lincoln Middle School's Golf Team for their third straight Tri-County Championship. If y'all would step over here to the middle. All right, North Lincoln Middle School Cross Country Girls Team, come on up. Okay, the North Lincoln Middle School Girls Cross Country Team won the Tri-County Championship after an undefeated season. This is the third year in a row that these ladies have swept the competition. Coach Danell and Coach Powell are very proud of the hard work and dedication these girls gave at every practice and meet. They also would like to thank Coach Castro and North Lincoln High School Cross Country Team for their support and encouragement. Congratulations to North Lincoln Middle School's Cross Country Team for being the 2024 Tri-County Champions for the third time in a row. Congratulations. Y'all would go to the middle, go to the middle. Congratulations. I'd like to call up the West Lincoln, uh, West Lincoln Girls Cross Country Team. Another here. I'd like to congratulate the West Lincoln Girls Cross Country Team on their championship season. The girls placed first at the Cleveland Community College Two Mile Race, first at Bandys, first at Bunker Hill, and second, second at the Chevy Invitational. And they're, they came in second to a charter school, so really the first in public school. The girls won their third consecutive United Way Invitational title and their second straight Catawba Valley Conference title. In a four-year span, the senior girls won three out of the four Catawba Valley Conference Championships. So great, great job seniors. The girls placed fifth in the Western Regionals, and then Adelaide-Sutton qualified for the state championship. So congratulations again for the West Lincoln Girls Cross Country Team for being the 2024 Catawba Valley Conference Champions. Also like to mention that Coach Rick Mitchum was named Coach of the Year, so congratulations to all y'all. Y'all would step to the middle. Congratulations. Next, I'd like to call up the West Lincoln High School Golf Team. All right, the 2024 West Lincoln Lady Golf Season was a historic and outstanding season. The Lady Rebels won 10 out of the 12 tournaments they participated in. They completed their second straight undefeated conference schedule, making them back-to-back Catawba Valley Conference Champions. The Lady Rebels golfers finished second in the 1A, 2A Western Regional Championship and finished fifth overall in the 1A, 2A State Championships. Congratulations ladies for being the 2024 Catawba Valley Conference Champions. Also, Melanie Hoffman became the second Lady Rebel golfer in school history by winning the 2024 Individual of Catawba Valley Conference Champions. And she, I'm trying, there she is. Sorry. And also, Coach Matt Litten was named Coach of the Year for the conference, so congratulations to him as well. If y'all would now come to the middle to take a picture. If y'all would now come to the middle to take a picture. Alright, congratulations. And West Lincoln Women's Tennis Team? Congratulations. The West Lincoln Women's Tennis Team ended the season as the Catawba Valley Conference Champions for the fourth season in a row. They also won the Catawba Valley Athletic Conference Tournament four out of five years, so congratulations, very successful season in both the conference and the tournament championship. The team was led by Co-Captains Jada Willis and Haley Black and Senior Stacia Cowen? Cowan? Thank you, sorry. Natalie Barger, also Natalie Barger. The rest of the top six sophomores were Kennedy McCumber and Peyton Hood. All six players qualified for the individual regional tournament held at Belmont Abbey College, and five of the six made the quarterfinals of the regional. The team received a bye in the first round of the playoffs based on their success throughout the regular season, and they defeated North Stanley and Newton Conover in the playoffs on their way to a top eight, 2A team in the state. So top ten, it's great job girls. They also lost, they lost to the state champions, Pine Lake Prep. They finished with the season at thirteen and three, so congratulations again. Alright, if y'all, if y'all come to the middle, come to the middle. Congratulations.
If I can have the four young ladies and their music teacher to come forward? So I'm gonna have, I'm gonna have Michaela, these four girls, I want to stand right with me just for a second. So I want to say congratulations to Michaela, Michaela, raise your hand. Michaela, this is her second year participating in the North Carolina Music Educators Honors Chorus. We also have Anna Ellis, Erin Probst, and Sadie Foley from Catawba Springs Elementary School. They were selected to the North Carolina Music Educators Honors Chorus. The Honors Chorus performed in Winston-Salem this past weekend on November the tenth, and Abby Kiesler at Catawba Springs is their music teacher. So congratulations and great job.
Alright, now we're gonna move into the Lincoln Lead section. If we could, from Lincolnon High School, is Ms. Hunley Makeupson here? Okay, you can come on up, please. Any other students from the interact club? The president is, I'll watch y'all come up here. Congratulations. The president is Jack Jen, Secretary Emily Morris. And then the leadership team is comprised of Claire Parlier, Sawyer Gibson, Emily Lawson, and Natalie Cavillo Narcuso. The, Mrs. Ballard nominated this team and Ms. Makeupson for the Leadership Award because they had a first meeting last month and they had nearly fifty students to show up, and they're just getting started, but they're, she's very thankful for the student leadership team, and she cannot wait to see what they do for Lincolnon High School. So congratulations. One more. Alright, good job, thank you. Next, next we have Lincolnon Middle School Student Lighthouse Team. Their teacher leader is Ms. Autumn Melton, if you would all come up, please. And we have certificates, and we may, we should, what'd be the best way, call their names out? Okay? Okay, I'll call out all the names and then we can get out certificates, how about that? We have Dindly Hoover, Kaziah Anderson, Sawyer Tipton, Parker Fletcher, Samaria Littlejohn, Nelson Morquez, Kenyatta Curry, Julian Hunter, Nicole, Nicole Assen, Carrie Murray, Dylan Herrera, Javion Elmore, Brandon Beal, Jeremiah Nixon, Nyla Nixon, Asanaya Broadnax, Lydia Gibson, Catherine Diaz-Coca, and Bailey Vang. Congratulations. She's gonna get right there, there's your certificates. Thank you all, thank you for coming. And our last Lincoln Lead Celebration today is from Love Memorial Elementary, taking up the first couple rows here. This is the Love Leads Collaborative Schoolwide Election. So once they all come up here? Alright. This was led, this initiative was led by Mr. Bartley Bess and Ms. Stephanie Campbell. And the students involved with this were Noel Bess, Raphael Cavillo-Mundragon, Gerald Dominicas Lopez, Sawyer Bolton, Colt Goodman, Chase Hardman, Jen Publico, Cooper Stamey, and Grace Talent. When asked for a nomination, Ms. Hoffman provided me this information about what this team did. They worked collaboratively and held a schoolwide election. Y'all remember doing that? Yes. And Students at Love Memorial, they voted on the President of the USA, a new school mascot design, which they have already implemented, and it looks great, and a name for the mascot. Y'all remember his name? Clarence Cardinal, perfect. Okay. So in preparation for this activity, all fifth grade students learned about the main talking points for each candidate, that they then participated in a scripted mock debate. Then two students rehearsed and recorded a political advertisement showcasing all the candidates. The entire fifth grade created an advertisement showcasing an election debate in song form. Both aired schoolwide on Election Day. Students in Ms. Campbell's fifth grade AIG class prepared and ran the election. They counted ballots and confirmed the election results before having Mrs. Hoffman announce them. The group had a special visit from Ms. Biggerstaff, she explained how the actual voting works. Students discussed the importance of a secure and fair election. Sample ballots were distributed to the classroom teachers to review. And official election ballots were used on Election Day and were color-coded by precinct. It's pretty official. The students even provided absentee ballots for staff who would not be present on Election Day. Oh, this is my favorite part. All students were required to say their names and grades in order to vote. Staff were required to state their name, position in the school, and present a valid form of identification. Some staff tried to vote using incorrect forms of identification, or no form of identification, and were turned quickly away. Some people even tried to vote twice, however, our quick-witted students caught the errors. After completing the ballot, students were directed to place the ballot in a secure box and given the "I voted" sticker printed out by the PTO. And let's give a great, a hand to the great job these students did. Thank you. Scoot that way. Or to the middle. Yeah, cause there's not me. Yeah, oh yeah, Bartley. Congratulations.
I believe the recognition on our agenda is one of the most exciting, entertaining, joyful times that we have. Not only do the students of Lincoln County receive a quality education here, but they're given the opportunity to participate in extracurriculars, and I think we can see tonight for the students, their skills, their talents have really shown through in their educational process. At this time, do we have a need to go into closed session? We don't have a need to go into closed session? So, our next, yes? Wait, I think, I looked too quick. At this time, are there any individuals to appear before the board? If not, we'll move on now to our action items. The first one is to approve the low-performing school improvement plans that have stood open for twenty-five days. Those plans were reviewed with us in a previous minute meeting. And at this time, I'll entertain a motion that the plans be approved for Battleground Elementary, GE Massey Elementary, Love Memorial Elementary, and Lincolnon Middle School. Is there a motion to approve? I think I heard Mr. Jenkins first. And Mr. Mullen, will you second?
Yes, sir.
So we have a second by Mr. Mullen. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the school improvement plans for the low-performing schools, let be known by saying aye. Opposed likewise? We have a unanimous decision to approve the plans. The next item is from the Ad-Hoc Policy Review Committee. And the Ad-Hoc Policy Review Committee met on October the twenty-fourth and reviewed the 4,000-series policies which are targeted to the students. And we have recommendations on twenty-one of those policies. And our recommendation is that those policies stand open for twenty-five days. But first, I need to read the policy numbers, and those are the 4,000, the index series, the forty, 4,050, 4,125, 4,126, 4,135, 4,150, 4,151, 4,153, 4,220, 4,250, 4,300, 4,302, 4,307, 4,320, 4,325, 4,329, 4,335, 4,342, 4,345, 4,354, and 4,450. So the recommendation, recommendation coming from the Ad-Hoc Committee is for those identified policies to stand open for twenty-five days for review. And coming from a committee, there's no need for a second. So all those in favor of approving the 4,000-series that have been reviewed, to stand open for twenty-five days, let it be known by saying aye. Opposed likewise? So the 4,000-series policies that have been reviewed will stand open for twenty-five days for review. Moving on to our consent agenda items, we have approval of minutes for October the first work session, and October the eighth, the board meeting. We have extended field trips, we have personnel recommendations, and we have policies that stood open for twenty-five days for input. And we have the middle school restroom facilities, concession facilities to approve the architectural drawings, IT department truck purchase, purchase of computers, and high school security camera purchase. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda items? Excuse me, I need a motion. Jumping ahead. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items. We have a motion by Krista Hevner. Is there a second? Have a second by Erin Long. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye. Opposed likewise? So our consent agenda items have been approved. And at this time, to go over a few reminders and announcements, the Ad-Hoc Policy Review Committee will next meet on November the twenty-first at nine AM here in the Board of Education office. There will be a North Carolina School Board Annual Conference in Greensboro, November the eighteenth through the twentieth. I think we have a few board members signed up to go. We'll have a new Board of Education member orientation here at the Board of Education Office on November the twenty-fifth. And then, our board work session will be December the third, and then our monthly board meeting, meeting will be December the tenth. Any other reminders or announcements? Any other reminders or announcements?
Mr. Judd?
Yes?
I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn.
Mr. Mullen, we accept your motion to adjourn. And we have a, a second by Myra Havner. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor to adjourn our meeting, let it be known by saying I. Opposed likewise?